Tim Harris, District Seven candidate for the school board.
Who could have thought it, right? At this stage in my career, it's kind of like, it seems like the foundation has been laid for me to be able to come back with a heart of service in behalf of what I think is our most precious resource. That's our children. You know, I said that when I was district attorney in all the years, I was an assistant district attorney, director of crimes against children in the DA's office. I always had a heart for children. And now it seems like that is the foundation that's been laid so that I can represent them. I can advocate for them. You know, I said this and I'm saying it now. You know, it's not our military might. It's not our oil. It's not our natural gas. It's not our wealth. It's really our children.
It's our children.
It's our children.
And it's, it's an honor to be here with you today. You and I go way back. I was able, my name's Charlotte Guest, for those that don't know me, and I just am a big fan of yours. I was asked by a lot of people backing your campaign to just facilitate a conversation, to let District Seven parents and people and voters know more about you and what you're about today. Your goal is to be a part of the school board and to represent District Seven. And before we get going, Tim, would you tell District Seven people a little bit about you? Many people may not know about your career or your family. Can you just give us a quick overview about who you are?
You bet. I have a great wife. We've been married 37 years. We have two adult children. They just gave me my first grandchild, my son Luke and his wife Hannah down in Waco, Texas. And then my daughter Natalie and her husband Rick love. They're both locally. The apple didn't fall far from the tree with all the child abuse I did. My daughter actually works in the Department of Human Services vetting homes with a team of other social workers to make sure that kids who have been suspected of being abused go into a safe environment. I mean, the worst thing we can do for children is re-traumatize them when we realize that there's been a problem by putting them in an unsafe situation. So she does that. And it's kind of like, all those years that I was doing child abuse prosecution and representing kids as victims and getting them through the criminal justice system without re-traumatizing, to have my daughter actually in that field without any pushing from me.
That's wonderful. It takes a strong person to do that. So you're right. I mean, you have so much strength that you brought when you were the DA, and it was an honor to watch how you served our people in Tulsa.
Well, you know, it's kind of like it laid that foundation where I, from an eyewitness catbird seat, saw lives, not hundreds of lives, thousands of lives. In 28 years, if you just do the calculations, we filed about 12,000 cases a year. Half were misdemeanors, half were felonies. Most of those were 18 to 24, so they had just gotten out of high school and moving into adulthood. And this is what I found, Charlotte, and for all the people that are listening to this, it's almost like you pay me twice. Once a failed life because they didn't have a good education to rely upon. And so they didn't, they couldn't read, they couldn't write very well, they certainly couldn't do math very well. And so guess what? They're gonna eat, they're gonna rent an apartment, they're gonna buy a car. If they can't do it legally, how are they gonna do it? They do it illegally. And so I saw the train wrecks of young lives by the thousands. And that golden thread through all of that, that I saw for all my years, 28 years.
Yeah, 28 years in that, in that job.
Lack of education was the foundation, right? And so one way or another, they're gonna figure out how to pay their bills, and if they can't do it lawfully, they're gonna do it unlawfully. And so, you know, we lost a life on the front end because we didn't give them a good education. Then the taxpayers pay a second time when they get prosecuted in the criminal justice system. And so it's a win-win if we give our kids the kind of education we know that they deserve.
Young people of today, I know when you and I were talking before we did this podcast, you just said the future of, the future of Tulsa and the future really of the world is our little people in the classrooms today.
Well, I was telling a group yesterday, the older I get, the more I sense that life is a relay race. And what I mean by that is some point in that race, you've got the baton. And you're gonna pass that baton to somebody else behind you, a generation behind you. What do they believe? What are their values? What are they gonna do with that baton? They're actually going to be making decisions about your quality of life when you're no longer in a position of leadership making those decisions. So how are we training these young leaders up? That's why I'm running. I want to use my 37 years in the practice of law. Everything that I saw firsthand, I got a bird's eye view of lives ending up in an absolute train wreck, okay? And if we can figure out how to change that in behalf of these children, you know what becomes, Charlotte? It becomes a win-win for the community, for the families, and certainly for the individuals. And so that's why I'm so excited about running and representing the people of District Seven.
Yeah, and I know you feel like this is something you're called into, which is encouraging to me and hopefully other parents listening. You could be doing anything after a successful DA career with your life, and you've decided. And tell us about how you came to that decision.
This is kind of a funny story. It has to do with my faith. I was listening to KRMG Shaving, and I just overheard Dan Potter talk about an open seat on the Tulsa Public School Board in District Seven. And so I thought, oh, wow, I wonder, that's gonna affect their kids, you know? And when I got to work at the sheriff's office after I had kind of a lull, I just said, you know, I'm kind of embarrassed. I don't really know what Tulsa Public School District I live in. So I Googled it and realized it's really from 51st to 71st Street and from the river to Memorial. There's some, you know, jig jogs throughout all of that. But I found that where I live, about 71st and Lewis, I'm smack dab in the middle of District Seven.
Wow.
And so as I was kind of seeking some direction from the Lord about, do I have further public service in me? I prayed and I said, Lord, I have my health, I have the energy. Hopefully I have more wisdom than I've ever had before. And you know my heart is for kids. It always has been, right? So is this what you want me to do? And it was just a confirmation as I sat at my computer screen. Within two hours, I called Gwen Freeman down at the election board and said, hey Gwen, what do I have to do to file for District Seven School Board? And she kind of went crazy because she used to be on KFAQ 1170 with Michael Del Giorno. She was a tag team. And now she's at the election board.
It's interesting how stepping stones will be laid when you're called into something.
Well, you know, it's kind of like all those different people in your life. As you mature and go forward, those are all part of the building blocks and the masonry that goes in, and we're putting the cement down the mortar, and that's what builds all that. And so, you know, everyone has to take a look at it and say, no, there really is nothing that's lost in your relationships because you have no idea how later on that's gonna shape you and prepare you. I mean, let's face it.
This is a great segue. We were just talking about that. I said, hey, tell me what you've learned in all your years that will help on the school board. Just bottom line, everything that you've learned in your career, how do you feel like that would help as a member of the school board?
Well, you know, 28 years in the DA's office, I saw the underbelly of what's happening in society. Most people didn't have the opportunity to see that. And so my heart breaks to see our children not getting the quality education that they deserve so that they can choose a career path for themselves that excites them. And so with all the, all the terrible things that happened to those people's lives, they had to be held accountable because they committed some pretty, pretty serious crimes. But their lives still have value, okay?
Absolutely.
And so I thought, what a great opportunity to kind of get in on the front end of this and keep them from coming into the criminal justice system, right? And that's a win-win. Win for the child, win for the community, win for the family. And so that really was the impetus that got me motivated to say, you know what? The school board race is where I need to use my gifts and talents.
Well, and your heart for kids, I've known you for many, many years, and you were, you know, servant Timothy at church and taught kids about, about your faith and about so many things. This isn't something that you're just doing. You've lived this for as long as I've known you.
Well, I have. I dressed up on Sunday mornings in three, four, and five-year-olds, and they can be like sponges. I mean, sometimes they're a ping pong, a ping pong ball in a shoebox. They're all over the place. But sometimes when you're speaking truth to them, they're just like sponges, and you can see it in their eyes. And so I was honored to do that for 23 years.
23 years. Well, that's a lot of kids, a lot of our kids grew up under that. But you know, I want to ask you something else too. Talking about your career at the DA, and you also mentioned, I said, there's some things that, that were great. And then you, we talked about right before we started videoing today, what would you change? Is there anything you would have changed, you know, that you can take that in to the school board as well? What would you have done differently?
All parents make mistakes along the way, right? As did I.
Me too.
And there was many times as the elected district attorney, I told my wife Tiari, I said, hey, I took an oath to these people to represent them. And it didn't happen that often, but there certainly were times where I'd either made a promise about a vacation or something that we were gonna do as a family. And in the last minute, it's kind of like, you know, they don't come to the DA because they're really smart lawyers themselves unless they've got a really booger of a problem, right? And so, you know, I look back and I called my family and I said, hey, you know, this unexpectedly came up, and I'm just not gonna be able to get home in time, or we're not gonna be able to go on that vacation, at least not at that time. And you know, for kids, it's kind of like, hey, they don't understand that, you know, for whatever reason, a judge came down with a ruling that changed the original plan to a new plan, and I had to be flexible enough to say yes with that. But, you know, it kind of breaks my heart that, you know, there were times that I let my kids down.
Sure. You know, we all do as parents, and I know, like, that's something you and I talked about before we started filming is, in this role in District Seven on the school board, you don't want parents let down, and you have some very concrete goals.
Well, that is, and first, I want to connect. I want to connect with the four entities that I think are really important. I want to connect with the other school board members and the superintendent. I want to connect with the administration. Then I want to connect with the parents, because I really feel like the parents don't feel like they have a voice on the school board right now. And then certainly the students. So we have those four entities. And I've been around long enough to know that you get more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. So let's collaborate together. Let's see what common ground we have to be able to give the best education to those kids, our kids and grandkids, right? And whether your kids went to Christian school, private school, or you're homeschooled, people oftentimes forget this, right? Your ad valorem taxes, if you own a home, right? Support the funding of Tulsa Public Schools. So you have a vested interest. And you say, well, I live in an apartment. Well, guess what? Your income tax and your state tax also fund education. So everybody, everybody, right?
Everybody.
No one is excluded in this, has a vested interest in the public school system.
Yes, and you're a product of public school education.
I am. I went to Catholic school, third grade through eighth grade, and then public school, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, back in Wisconsin. And so I am a product of public schools, right? And one of the things that I want to bring when I connect with those four entities is getting back and working with teachers to help give our kids that basis of the education that allows them to read well, to know how to write and put a sentence together, and where is a comma? Where is an exclamation point? What is a period? You know, putting my ideas together in a paragraph before I move on to the next paragraph. Those basic writing skills you use in business all the time, right? And so when we look at that, and, you know, I heard somebody talk to me the other day, that this young lady was trying to make change, and she couldn't make change, working a cash register, simple math, she just couldn't get it done. She was frustrated. And so, you know, it's those basics that I want to work with those teachers and say, hey, let's make sure that we're giving our kids the basic foundation so that they can make good career choices. Now, I'll be truthful, you know? Back in my day, it was everybody had to be college-bound, college-prepared, right? But I remember the shop class that we were in, there were guys in shop class and automotive class that could break an engine down blindfolded, okay? Those gifts and talents probably aren't college-bound, right?
That's right, and not everybody is.
And when my car breaks down, I need to go somebody who has that gift and talent. So we talk about the trades. I'm much more attuned because I've seen it, that we have to allow a child to pick a career path, hopefully, right? Based on some basics. But let's not forget about the trades, right? I mean, you know, somebody work on your washer machine, somebody work on your dryer, you know, somebody, you know, all those things. Your refrigerator goes down, right? I mean, it's $65 an hour to get somebody coming your way, plus time and parts when they... I once did the calculation that those in the trades made more than I did as the elected district attorney on an hourly basis, okay? So, you know, don't poo-poo that because those people are making a really, really good living, a six-figure living.
Sure, and everybody has a calling. And you know, Tim, you mentioned to me one thing you thought was a good thing, a good outcome of COVID. There's so many horrible stories and so many things lost and lives lost. Some good that came out of it, when the kids had to be home with their parents, the parents were able to look over their shoulder and see. And you want to connect with those parents that are now really seeing what's happening in the classrooms.
Exactly. I think instead of hearing about it or getting something in writing that was sent home to them, that they perused, they looked over Johnny or Suzie's shoulder, because everybody had a laptop, right? That's how distance learning is accomplished, right? Saw what was going on, and so they want to have a voice, right? I mean, my ideology is the school should reflect the ideology of the community, okay? So we need to be listening to those parents about what it is they think is best for their children. And in the big scheme, administration, the money, teachers, everybody grabbing hands, working together in a collaborative manner to make sure that we reach that child, okay? We reach them, we teach them, and we give them those basics. And so hopefully, parents in District Seven, you know, if you elect me on February 8th, you'll have a voice, okay?
And how will they reach you, Tim? I loved how you talked about this. You want this to be so easy for parents to reach you.
Oh, yeah. I think the easiest way is to go on my Facebook, right? Everyone's digital these days. My Facebook is Tim Harris for Tulsa Public School Board. If you go there, it gives a way to donate to my campaign. It gives you actually the name of the account, Harris for School Board 2022, and where to send that check. And it also has my phone on there and an email, info@votimharris.org. So if you want to ask me specific questions about specific ideas that you have, or those touch points that concern you and your child, right? I'll be open to talking to you, to listen to you. I mean, the main thing I learned is practicing law 37 years is you get more out of listening than you do out of talking, right? And for a lawyer, that's hard to say, right? Lawyers, cha-cha-cha-cha-cha. We want to take the floor over, we want to be heard, but really, it's in listening before we engage into that first gear and get moving forward, that listening ear that helps us respond in an appropriate manner.
And I know you want to listen to those people in District Seven. You shared an astounding fact to me about the number of people that voted. Could you share that with the people in District Seven? We need more people to the polls.
Well, I hate to talk about this because in some way it's convicting, but hopefully it's convicting enough to get parents...
And encouraging, hopefully.
Right. Hopefully, to get out and vote on February 8th. There's the standalone election, so it'll probably go over a lot of people's heads, right? Because there isn't any other election cycle tied with it other than the school board. But there, I've identified about 22,000 voters in the district. That's Republicans, Democrats, independents. In the last District Seven School Board election, 978 total people voted in that election.
So 978 decided...
Out of 22,000.
So we need more people to the polls. If you see this video, if you're watching and if you're concerned for your kids in District Seven, we need this video shared.
This, it needs to be shared, but even more so, if you know somebody that lives in that area, 51st to 71st, from the Arkansas River to Memorial, you say, oh, you know, I know John Smith, he lives in that area. You aren't gonna be able to vote for me unless you live in District Seven, okay? But you can help with the outcome of that vote so that I can get in there and work with the administration, work with the teachers, the parents and the students to give them the best education possible. It only happens, though, if voters in District Seven, number one, are apathetic, and two, go vote on February 8th, right?
And go vote, absolutely.
And for a lot of them, that may be a new experience, right? Because there's not a city council race with it, there's not a presidential race with it, nobody's, you know, the senatorial race, or, you know, US Congress race doesn't go with it, you're not voting for the mayor, right? It's a standalone election for Tulsa Public School Board.
Yes, and parents in District Seven, the best thing you can do for your kid on that day is to get out and vote.
And if you don't live in District Seven and you know somebody who does, please call them and say, listen, this, we have a vested interest in this, right? Go look at Tim Harris. I know who he is, I'm supporting him. You don't have to take that on blind faith, so to speak. You can go to my, you can go to my Facebook and see the things that I've posted from my heart about my love for children, because I know that they're our future. And then you call that person who lives in District Seven and say, hey, you're gonna get out and vote. And then on the day, February 8th, you call them again and say, hey, I know I'm being a nag. I know I'm being a nag after you, okay? But you gotta get out and vote, right? And they say, oh, yeah, yeah, I know, I remember. Yeah, Tuesday, February 8th, right? That's what will change things.
It will definitely. And you know, Tim, you want to connect, that's one thing you want to do and you want to carry out. You have some specific goals for those people in District Seven and their kids. What are your goals that you, that you want to carry out when you are on that school board?
You know, most of the schools in District Seven are PK to five or PK to six. Memorial is my high school, and then the feeder, the junior high, it's Memorial, is also in my district. But most of the schools are the elementary, right? So if that's my district and I want to help make good decisions for all of our students, but since I'm representing that PK to fifth grade or PK to sixth, one of the things that was studied, and they went into the prisons and talked to people about, what is it that put you on the highway that led you to end up in the penitentiary? You know what it was? The one bottom-line variable that seemed to change everything, ability to read and proficiency in the third grade. Okay? And so kids need to be able to read at a third grade level before they're moved on to the fourth grade. Because if Johnny or Suzie is a problem child, or they have a learning disability or whatever, and they're not reading, they're not passing the third grade proficiency exam, and we just move them into the fourth grade, now the fourth grade teacher has a problem. And then the fifth grade, and the sixth grade, and the seventh, and the eighth, and then all of a sudden, we got somebody going to a freshman in high school who, from third grade on, has really been behind the eight ball and having a difficulty. So those basics to make sure that they do read, find out why they're not reading, and then make sure that they can pass those proficiency tests. I was so empowered to do something about that, that I joined up with reading partners and went to McClure, which is close to my neighborhood, and said, you know, give me one of your third graders that needs some help. And so I did it, you know, four different semesters with two different children. And really what I found is, they had all the intellectual capability to do it, right? They just needed somebody to come alongside of them and encourage them.
And believe in them.
And to believe in them, send them that message, sound out those consonants, sound out those vowels, right? The basic reading so that when they see that word on the page, cha-cha, they know what a CH sounds like, right? Amp, amp, champ. Oh, I know what champ is, right? I know that sounds really bottom-line.
But it is.
It is. It's a young child learning how to read the written word. And this just absolutely broke my heart. When I was in the DA's office, I was trying a murder case, and I had a young man that came forward against probably all of his neighbors didn't want him to do it, but he came and testified truthfully. We were preparing for the jury trial after the preliminary hearing, and the court reporter puts a transcript, everything that was said. And I gave him his transcript, and I said, well, the first preparation we need to do so that you can get ready for the jury trial is read your transcript. Had a high school diploma from a Tulsa Public School institution, could not read his own transcript. And he had a diploma. And I just said to me, someday, some way, I don't know when, I have to be part of the team that makes sure that that doesn't happen.
And it is a team. And I love that we were talking before. Well, first of all, that time sounds like it's right now. It sounds like it is right now on February 8th.
Yes.
That is the time that the directive can be changed for you to be part of that team, is to be voted in. And I know you mentioned that you have such a heart for teachers that are in the classroom, and they are doing their best despite the limitations they have. So talk to me about the teachers that you want to also help and what you see, what are they, what are they standing against right now and why you want to fight for them?
Number one, they deserve more money than we pay them, okay?
Absolutely.
They have a heart of public service, and so I understand what has motivated them to get into the teaching field. It was the same motivation, just a different track, that got me into law enforcement in the Tulsa County District Attorney's Office. And so money, we need to get them what's appropriate for their money, but come alongside of them. I mean, they understand that they have challenges, right? We're not going to increase our graduation rate by finger-pointing, okay? The only way we're gonna do that is figuring out, you know, what's those touch points that really are challenges for those teachers, and then come alongside of them and help them figure that out. And then when we work together, I've said this before in this interview, it's a win-win. It's a win-win for the child, it's a win for the teacher, it's a win for the school district and the school, it's a win for the family. And then all of a sudden, we have someone who's prepared to take that baton that we're gonna pass one day.
And I love, Tim, that you said that listening is such a key. So many of our teachers don't feel heard. They don't feel like anybody's listening.
Yes.
And that needs to change.
Well, they've got a tough job, okay? With COVID and teachers either moving to other jurisdictions for higher pay, right? Their class size is increasing. Every time you deal with increased class size, you have more behavior issues that come up. And so, you know, with more students, you would hope that they would be able to kind of core down, but really what happens is, is they, because they just have sheer numbers of more people, they're going to have other disciplinary issues that rise up. So, right, they've got their back up against the wall, right? I will listen to them, I will figure out how to come alongside them and support them.
You said you'd be so accessible. They're not gonna, they're not gonna not get to talk to you.
Oh, yeah. I mean, how can I represent not only the taxpayers, but those teachers who have committed themselves, right? To influencing that most important resource that we have, our children, our future? What an honorable profession to get into, right? And so, you know, right now with COVID and everything that's going on with distance learning and all the issues that come out of that, it's kind of like, not only do they have a difficulty just doing the basic blocking and tackling that they've signed up to do because they have a heart for children, right? Now they have all the pandemic issues to deal with, right? Which is lessening the number of teachers, right? And so, okay, you have someone who's certified, God bless them, but they probably don't have that depth of background in education that we really want the teachers to have, right? I mean, we want somebody in that classroom, and thank goodness that they're there to fill the void, but they probably aren't 15, 20-year teachers, right? And it's like any profession, you grow, you mature, you get better at what you're doing. You realize what works with kids, what doesn't work with kids. It may look good on paper, but that's paper, right?
And there's been some great stories, I think, that I've read of young people that have entered in, in that certification role, and they see the need in our schools, and then they go out there and they get that, and they are going to be in the classrooms. And that excites me too, when you think of people in Tulsa that have seen the need, and they're ready to stand up. And I know you want to work with those people as well.
Well, that's that touch point for them, right? With hands-on, with the children in the classroom, and they're like, you know, I want to be part of the solution here, not part of the problem, I want to be part of the solution. And so, you know, what a great motivating experience for them to want to then fill that void.
That's right. And you know, Tim, we talked about hearing the administration, hearing the teachers, hearing the parents, hearing the students, being accessible. You have everything set up in place for all of these people to reach out to you at any time when you're elected. The other thing is carrying out these goals. How do you see yourself marching forward with that baton to carry this out? It's gonna take a community.
It will. Basic education, reading, writing, math, history, and science. Let's get back to the basics to make sure that our children are getting them. Parental involvement, let's make sure that parents have an ear and they can talk about what's happening that they see with their child at the end of the school day at home, struggling to get homework done, right? Those parents have a vested interest in a God-given right, right? To lead that child, right? And so that and then compelling others to make sure that we're accountable, both financially and in the classroom. There has to be accountability so that Johnny or Suzie, who is the student, right? Somebody has to be held accountable, right? And, and I know it's a difficult decision to hold a child back, but if for whatever reason that child isn't reading at a third grade level, it's a difficult thing to do, but not progressing them onto fourth grade is probably the right thing to do, right? And maybe they can catch back up with that class later on, right? But just moving them forward isn't going to work. So we need accountability of the classroom, but we also need accountability to make sure that the dollars that parents are putting in to help generate what funds the Tulsa Public School District and those teachers and the administration and everything are spent appropriately, okay? I guess one thing I learned in the District Attorney's Office, you know, follow the money, right? If you follow the money, you can start to see where it's actually going. And I'm not.
And where it's not going.
Exactly. And I'm not talking about an audit where you make your checkbook jive, right?
Yes.
I'm talking about like a forensic audit that actually tells parents, this is how the money is being spent, right?
These are things parents need to know. A lot of parents don't know this. And a lot of parents don't know what questions to ask and, and where to look. And they just wake up and they get their kids to school and they go to their job. And that's why they need an advocate.
Yes. And it's in my heart to be an advocate for their children, right? That greatest resource, right? To look at that young life, you know, the older I get, it goes from success to significance, right? And if you want to be significant, you start to think about legacy, right?
That's right.
And, and I can't remember who said this, but I think it's just very poignant in our discussion today. You're not a success unless you have a successor, right? And that's that whole relay thought that I talked about earlier, passing that baton to a generation that comes behind us.
Yes.
Right? And you know, Ronald Reagan said, hey, this hasn't passed out of the bloodstream, you gotta fight for it.
You do. And I love that. I'm looking at your, um, campaign, uh, sheet right here. And it says, it's so simple. It says, Tim Harris will fight for our kids. And I, I love that. And it is, it is a fight. There's so much passivity. There's so much just complacency and there's so much right now where it's easier to just turn a blind eye and not address things and just go through these days of this COVID malaise and all of these things that we're all dealing with. I know someone the other day said, I just wish I could get some people to answer the phone. Everything's gotten to recorded messages, press two, press three. It was never that way when I worked with you.
Right.
That was really important to you in the DA's office that people were answered and they were responded to quickly. And I know you're going to carry that forward.
Well, that, and I've learned that that connection to help me represent those victims of crime is very, very close to representing our students and our parents, right? You do have an entity that needs to have that voice. And that's what I did for at least 28 years in my 37 years of practicing law. I served people by, you know, protecting their public safety. Real people involved in real situations.
Yes.
And making sure that those victims were made whole to the best that we could hold people accountable and do that. But there is no life worth throwing away, right? So for those problem, that's, that's why I'm on the board of the Tulsa Boys Home, right? Those boys through no fault of their own had parental rights, many of them, you know, terminated. Some of those boys at 12, 13, 14 are full-blown addicts, alcoholics, on drugs, right? Those lives are important. We need to reach out to those young boys. That's why I serve on the board, because again, I want to create a win-win scenario. I want that child to win, I want the community to win, the taxpayer even wins.
Yes.
Right? Because you're not paying for another touch in the system with the criminal justice system. And so, you know, it's, I, I heard David Barton, he's a Christian historian. And he said, this isn't a time to decide whether I'm going to get involved. He said, the question is, where on the wall am I going to work, right? So it's like all of us together have to go and gravitate to the wall and figure out where are my gifts, where are my talents to make this work in behalf of my child, right? And what a great success it would be for the child and for this community if we come together with all the rancor that's going on politically right now. We say, you know what, we're going to put that aside because we've got our children that we're going to concentrate on. And that is going to be the motivation force for us to work together. That's the only thing that'll make it work.
It's so true. It takes everyone and it is a fight. And I love that you say here, Tim, we cannot sit on the sideline any longer where the future of our children hangs in the balance.
It is.
How do voters change that on February 8th?
They gotta go vote, right? Number one, understand that school board elections are just as important as all the other elections, right? Those people are public servants that are accountable to their constituency, right? Those parents. But it's one of the elections that kind of passes by people, right? Right? I mean, the numbers show that it's not an election that most people are number one aware of and number two, are motivated to actually go talk.
And you've done a great job though, to me today, those of us who pay taxes, it's, everyone has skin in the game.
Yes. That skin in the game and your child ought to be motivating enough to go to those school board meetings.
Your neighbor's child, it might be the kids in your apartment complex or your neighborhood. You may not know them, but they're the future of tomorrow. They're the future of Tulsa. They are Tulsa tomorrow.
They, they are Tulsa tomorrow, right? And you know, your kids may be grown, your kids may be out of school, but if you live in a neighborhood where kids are going to a public school, you're involved, right? You're involved with your property taxes, you're involved with your income tax and your sales tax. That all is the engine, the financial engine that helps support what's happening in Tulsa Public.
And it's as simple as saying, you get a say. And so voters in District Seven, you get a say in what's going to happen for the kids.
You will be heard.
You will be heard. And so, Tim, to wrap this up, I, I love talking about your career. I love talking about you're a product of public education. You've, you've walked it, you've lived it, you know what that's about. You so deeply want to empower not only just the kids, but administration, teachers. You're going to be accessible. Um, you have some goals. You talked a lot about connecting with all of these people and how to make it easy to reach you. You talked about carrying this out and, and how you're going to do this by having open communication, listening, being accessible, not a recording, not, not people getting back to you. You may have to have a recording, but you're going to get back to them quickly. I feel like you're going to be pretty busy because I feel like people in District Seven need some things to happen for their kids. And you're compelled, Tim, you're compelled to not, at this stage in the game in your life, sit on the sideline. You, you have a fire within you to fight for these kids in District Seven.
It's down deep.
It is, and it's authentic.
It's down in my spirit. I, I have been an advocate my whole career. Now it's time to be an advocate again for children, but in a little bit different position than it has been in the past.
Yeah.
That is what motivates me. I will be accessible. If I don't know the answer, I will do the research and try and find out what the answer is. And so that's why I need people on February 8th in District Seven. 51st to 71st Street, from the Arkansas River to Memorial Drive. There's a couple of, of jigjags in there, but that's basically the area. All those schools that are in there, I want to represent those students, those administrators. I want to work collaboratively and you know what? I want our kids to be prepared. I want them to what I call possess the key that opens the door of opportunity.
Absolutely.
And what that key is, is basic good education. And so, once we put that key in their hands, they now are empowered to choose a career path, right? That, that suits their gifts and talents. But we gave them the basic blocking and tackling tools in the toolbox of life that they will need to be successful in that career path.
Absolutely. Every life is so important. Every child in that classroom has a purpose. They have a call in their life, just like you have. And I know you want to draw that out in the best way possible. And, and those of you in District Seven, the best way to do this is by getting to the polls. Tim, last words, you can look right into that camera and talk to those people.
Yes.
And they, they're ready to hear your last parting thoughts. Thank you, everyone, by the way, for listening today, for being a part of learning more about Tim, learning more about his heart and his passion. And we're going to have him take it away and please vote on February 8th. Go, you can make a difference for your child. Thank you so much, Tim.
I want those that live in District Seven, especially those parents that have students in public schools, Tulsa Public Schools in District Seven, to know, I will fight for your child. You will have an advocate, somebody who cares about your child's success and will do whatever I can to work with all the entities that are on the table in a collaborative manner to make this work, to make sure that they're getting the basics, to make sure that they get the key to the door called opportunity, to live the American dream. There's nothing wrong with American exceptionalism, okay? It has caused us to be the wealthiest and the most sought-after nature in the world. That's why we have 140,000 people every month trying to come in our southern border. They don't think America's a bad place. They think it's a pretty darn good place. And it is a good place. You have more opportunities here in America than you do anywhere else. And it's our responsibility to make sure that our children are prepared. They are the leaders that will come up behind us and grab that baton and make good decisions, hopefully, based on what they've been trained to do. And so I would be honored to have your vote on February 7th. You can go to Facebook, Tim Harris for Tulsa Public School, and you can see the things that I posted and I stand for. But the main thing is, is getting out to vote on February 8th and getting others.
That's right, Tim. We gotta say February 8th.
February 8th.
February 8th, listeners.
That's the date.
That's the date.
Right? And even if you don't live in District Seven, if you know somebody that lives there or your pope, your folks live there, or you have friends or people from church or sports or whatever, you don't have to live there to have an influence. You can have an influence by making sure that those people who do live there know that there's a school board election on February 8th and they put it on their calendar big and bold and they actually go to the polls and vote. And vote for Tim Harris. I won't let you down. I will fight for your children.
Everyone, thank you for listening and I hope that the spirit that you feel here in this, in this video that we've done will penetrate throughout the school board and start to make some really exciting changes through our precious kids in Tulsa. Tim, thank you for your time today.
Charlotte, thank you. Appreciate your listeners.
Absolutely.